Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is November 26, 2024. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the invocation. As we come together this evening, let us all remember that we are here to work together and make wise decisions for the good of our community. Thank you so much back there, Mike Saproni. We appreciate all that you do as our TV operator each and every time we meet. Mayor Lehner, as well as Mrs. Hall, do have an excused absence for this evening. Mr. Sullivan, minutes please.
Your Honor, I have read and reviewed the council meeting and workshop minutes from November 12, 2024. I find them in order and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any issues? Questions? If none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes. We have no proclamations or special presentations today, and we also do not have any public hearings. Right now, we will switch to public comment on legislation. So if you are here and you wish to speak before council with comments on the new information about legislation on tonight's agenda, you may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there'll be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak on legislation? Seeing no movement, we will now... We have ordinances in second reading. I don't believe we have any of those. So, Mr. Sullivan, would you start us on the resolutions, please?
I will. I have a resolution... Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a donation of chairs and desks from the Kettering Police Foundation for use in the Kettering Police Department Intelligence Unit Office. The estimated cost is $8,300. The amount budgeted is zero, and this is requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. I think as Mr. Sullivan stated, the Kettering Police Foundation is donating four desks, four chairs to the Kettering Police Department for the Intelligence Unit Office, and the items purchased by the foundation will not exceed $8,300. Glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation of priority drones from the Kettering Police Foundation for use by the Kettering Police Department. Estimated cost $3,800. No amount is budgeted. This is requested by the police department. I do move for approval.
Second, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. The Kettering Police Foundation is donating funds to purchase two Priority DJI Avatar II Flymore combo drones. And I assure you that Chief Protsman can probably explain what those are better than I can, if you have any questions. The items purchased are expected to not exceed $3,800. Chief, you want to add anything?
Thank you. Let's just add to our fleet of drones that we're trying to create just to make things safer, both for officers and the citizens. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing a contribution to the Kettering Development Corporation. Estimated cost is $15,000. Amount budgeted is zero. This is requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
And I second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. The Kettering Development Corporation, as you may know, is a not-for-profit 501(c)(3), and its mission is to improve the city of Kettering by supporting the city's efforts to increase jobs and expand the tax base. They help accomplish this by participating in the redevelopment of commercial and residential properties in the city limits. And so, over the number... Over a number of years, the... Some of the projects they've been involved in have included Governor's Place, Kettering Point, Kettering Crossing, to name a few. In order to maintain the tax-exempt, not-for-profit, public charity status of the Kettering Development Corporation, they must receive a substantial part of their support from a government unit or the general public. So it's recommended that the city of Kettering donate $15,000 to support the KDC's mission, and these periodic donations that we have done require your legislation. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and we'll have... For the public, we'll have some members who serve on that board of council who will be abstaining because of their role on the board.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Abstain.
Mr. Scott?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase fitness equipment for the Kettering Recreation Complex and the Kettering Fitness and Wellness Center through competitive bargaining, negotiating quotations, and sole source suppliers. The estimated cost is $155,000. That matches the funds available. This has been requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. There are various units of fitness equipment that are in need of replacement at both our fitness facilities in our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts system, and this resolution will authorize a total of $155,000 of equipment to be purchased. We recommend its approval. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing a facade and site improvement grant for the property located at 1827 and 1875 East Stroop Road. The estimated cost is up to $25,000, and the amount budgeted is the same. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. We have a facade improvement and site improvement grant program in order to help facilitate the improvement of properties in Kettering, and this is a good project right at the corner of Stroop and Wilmington Pike. So the purpose of this resolution is to enter into an agreement with the property owner, Point Plaza LLC. They will participate in the Wilmington Pike Facade and Site Improvement Program. They are going to make facade and site improvements at their property located at 1827 through 1875 East Stroop, up to and not to exceed $25,000, which will be contributed from the city. That's a small portion of the overall site improvements that they are going to make. They'll be making landscape improvements, I believe painting the facility, dumpster enclosure, new awnings, and other site improvements. So we're excited to see that corner spruced up, and we're glad they're participating. We recommend their approval. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024. The amount requested is $1,966,672, and is requested by the Finance Department. I do move for approval.
Second, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. As we get to the end of the fiscal year, there's a few more of the supplemental appropriations on this agenda as there are on many of our normal agendas, and so bear with me as I go through them. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. The first, we have been affected by inflation like everyone else, and so there is several related to that. One is in the clerk of courts office, which is a supplemental appropriation requested for postage costs. The increase is due to additional criminal case mailings and postage rate increases, particularly for certified mail. That request for $20,000. Similarly, planning and development has requested supplemental appropriation of $20,000 due to additional property maintenance mailings and postage rate increases, again, particularly for certified mail. The police department has a supplemental appropriation of $12,100. That's to accept the donations that we've discussed, the Kettering Police Foundation donation for four desks and four chairs in the Intelligence Unit, as well as the $3,800 to support the acquisition of the drones. In our fire department, there's a supplemental appropriation request for $370,000 for the fire department's personnel budget for overtime expenditures. This is not unusual at this time of the year. The department experienced numerous vacancies throughout the year requiring overtime coverage. Vacancies were due to four retirements and two resignations, so there's a gap between when those occur and when we can have people operational, and often those staffing levels are insured during that gap in time through overtime. In addition, overtime was incurred for one of our member... A member for serving on Ohio Task Force One, which is deployed to North Carolina and Florida, an increase in coverage for emergency medical service standbys and fire department details at the Fourth of July and the solar eclipse, EMS coverage for the frays. While you're increasing the budget, so we have a supplemental appropriation here, in a few of these instances, we'll then later receive reimbursements. So there may be state and federal reimbursements for the solar eclipse, for our Ohio Task Force One deployment, and then some of the expenses for EMS coverage are reimbursed out of other funds. For instance, the frays fund pays for the costs of the EMS overtime. Be glad to answer any questions that you have, and we recommend approval.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
I have an ordinance in first reading. The ordinance is to enact Section 152.08 of the codified ordinances regarding city contracts. This is requested by the Law Department, and it's first reading.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes. Mr. Hamer, do you want to speak to that?
I would love that.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. Good evening, members of council, and Vice Mayor Fisher. The Ohio General Assembly recently adopted Ohio Revised Code Section 9.27 concerning provisions that are not allowed in state contracts, for example indemnification by the state of contractors or nondisclosure provisions that violate the Ohio Public Records Act. So enactment of this ordinance will put similar provisions in place for city contracts, which will hopefully cut down on protracted negotiations with vendors over those kinds of issues and conditions in city contracts, and this should be particularly useful for online purchases where employees have to click through electronic agreements and we don't get to see those terms and conditions in the law department. Be happy to address your questions.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Certificates and petitions.
Your Honor, we do have one certification. Certification Planning Commission is recommending approval of PC 24-012 zoning text amendment. Due to a publication error, the new public hearing regarding this request will be held at the December 3, 2024 Kettering City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Grayson, your community report.
Yes, Your Honor. There were a couple items I failed to go through on the supplemental appropriation before you voted, and I assumed you didn't have any questions on it, because when you moved to the vote, I didn't hear any. But I apologize for not covering them in detail, and I know that you have all the information, and so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, even though you already voted on it. It's my pleasure, on this day before Thanksgiving, to give you a brief community update. Medicare open enrollment began October 15, and if you need assistance with that, there are Medicare resources for residents, and we can help steer them to those resources. They can contact Natalie Storms, our senior services coordinator, at the number on the screen. Leaf pickup update. They are still following, and our final pass of leaf collection will begin on December 2, and will continue throughout the districts in numerical order. You've heard me talk a lot about leaf collection, and so I won't belabor the point, but please rake your leaves out soon, because we want to pick them up and make sure that you have an opportunity to avail yourself to this service. It's Native American Heritage Month. The Kettering Board of Community Relations encourages you to learn more about Native American heritage this month and anytime, because Kettering is home to all of us, and there's a number of ways that you can learn about Native American Heritage Month, which is in November, and the information to do that is on the screen. Of course, we want to wish... We're thankful for many things in Kettering, and we want to wish a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We also want to let you know that we will not be here on Thursday, November 28, and Friday, November 29. Our administrative offices will be closed, as like I hope everyone else in the community, we are giving thanks for all the many things that we enjoy here. Services are delayed one day for Thursday and Friday customers of Rumkey due to the holidays, so the November 28 collection on Thursday will be on Friday, and Friday customers will be delayed until Saturday. So put your trash and recycling at the curb the night before your revised collection day. And I think this is increasingly important, particularly with all of the online shopping we all tend to do. Our local businesses need our support during the holidays, and Small Business Saturday is November 30, so show your support for Kettering small businesses. I think one of our favorite events of the year is the mayor's tree lighting, and that is Friday, December 6, 6 to 8, in Lincoln Park Civic Commons. And if you haven't seen it already, our Parks team has found a beautiful tree, and it is waiting to be lit. We're excited about it. We do a lot more during the holiday than just light trees. We have the Rosewood Holiday Arts Festival, Saturday, December 7, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're inviting people out to discover all that Rosewood has to offer. And a Kettering tradition is our Christmas Day Gathering, December 25, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lathrum Senior Center. This is an opportunity, a free opportunity, for people to enjoy a hot meal with friends, treats, holiday music, pictures with Santa, and games for all ages. We're thankful for the volunteers that help support this event. As we know, it is a great time. There's a great time had by all, and so we encourage people to come join us on that day. And lastly, our upcoming meetings for December are a little different. December 3 is our budget workshop. We're going to start at 5:00 p.m. And December 3's city council meeting will begin at the regular time at 7:30. Normally, we have a week gap between our next city council meeting, but because it's December, we're going to have it just seven days later, on December 10. Workshop will start at the normal time at 6:00 p.m., the city council meeting at 7:30 p.m. on December 10. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
See no movement. So at this time, if you'd like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak before city council this evening? Come on down, sir. Name and address first.
David Woods. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
David Woods, 3230 Dayton, Ohio. I'd like to appreciate the vice mayor in the council meeting. I'm still complaining about Kettering Main Campus Hospital, complaining about the doctors who killed my dad, murdered him, because I was main part attorney in medical. They did not ask for my permission to kill him. They did on their own. And also, for the police that were corrupt, who lied to the city commission meeting, who are investigating Kettering Hospital right now, and they caught them in a lie. I'm saying their names. Nichols-Brogan.
Seva.
Seva.
And Balama.
Balama.
Nuash.
Nuash.
Maccar.
Maccar.
Hamant Mahindra Shah.
Hamant Mahindra Shah.
Corey Folic.
Corey Folic.
Scott Channell.
Scott Channell is the one that police asked to work in Kettering Hospital. Captain Perez, the Civil Rights Commission investigating Kettering Hospital. What's this?
Sorry, the beeper went off a little premature on you. Sorry. That's your five-minute... When it goes off the next time, that'll be your five minutes. So I'm sorry about a little technical difficulty.
Are you fine?
There we go. Oh, there we go. There you go. All right. Got it. Go ahead.
Okay, the Civil Rights... Sorry, that's the Civil Rights Commission, Christina McDonald. She's from Kettering. She's investigating Kettering Main Campus Hospital, and they illegally trespass, because they said I made a threat towards them. My dad died. I was going to hurt the docs and nurses, and then they said they trespass me. Well, they had the lawyers talk to the civil rights lady, and they told her that the threat was caused by a caller, and then the caller called in, and they called the doctors, and then they trespass me. Then later on, I told them to talk to Captain Perez, who trespass me. He didn't tell me he trespass me. He trespass me. He went and told the Civil Rights Commission that the Inglewood Police, Chief of Police now, he told them that I made a threat towards the docs and nurses, and then they went in and trust me. Well, civil rights caught them in a lie of that, because they said the lawyer said that the caller called in. Then I went to the chief of police in Inglewood, and I got his face, and I asked him, "Did you tell the docs and nurses in Kettering Hospital I made a threat towards them that my dad died?" He said, "Oh, no, I never did tell them that." I said, "Well, cool there." So, the guy... Kettering Hospital, they got caught alive in. He said he never did tell them that I made a threat towards them. Mike Lane, who retired from Inglewood Police, said that they never tell Kettering that. They said it was a threat, maybe. They said they never told them I made a threat, so they illegally trespass me. Now, I went to the city commission meeting to the mayor and told her I want the chief of police to go ahead and speak to her about it. Now he said, "All right, I don't remember that happened." I said, "Well, he can remember getting his check, but he can't remember that?" So then I asked the Inglewood mayor to go ahead and have a meet with me and the chief of police. So when I asked him again, "Did I make a... You tell the Kettering Hospital that I made a threat towards them? Did you tell Captain Perez that?" Because he said you said it, that he could go and tell her. So, I pointed myself as spokesman to speak for elderly people, women abused, and children. And I'm concerned about the people in Charles Senior Living in Kettering. I'm concerned about the YRC senior people who go to Kettering Hospital, because the male nurse slapped my dad's face in front of a woman chaplain, the male chaplain, and choked him like this. Next day, he got critical with the affection they gave him, Dr. Nixon. And the CEO of Kettering, my lawyers sent him papers, Anacel Rights, and he did nothing. This nurse right now is in y'all community. He's an intelligent white man. It looks clean-cut. Young man, like in his 30s, and he's in y'all stores. He's in y'all churches. He's among y'all now. He may be dating y'all daughters, for all we know. He's in Kettering Hospital right now, and I feel that he's choking elderly people right now, because when I went to Kettering Hospital, two weeks before they did this to my dad, it was a white woman. She was crying, "Ohhhhh," because they told her that her family were going to die. And they had a woman nurse escort her out of there, you know, into a room, because they say you disturb other patients. She cried because her family would die, and she was like, "Oohhh," and they had the male nurse looking at the woman nurse like this. "If you keep on, we're going to kick you out of the hospital." That cold blood to her. Two weeks... The lawyer tried to give me a sign to get my dad out of the hospital, but they were going to release him anyway. So she went ahead, so then she just ran out. "Oohhh," just ran out, cold-blooded. They talk about hostages for other people. They don't care about elderly people at all. And I'm concerned about women being abused, like the YRC, they need funds to help women, and children in the orphanage. I feel people need to adopt kids out here, because I don't have the kids. I always wanted a son and daughter. I feel we need to adopt these kids out here, and I need y'all to put... People need to put money for churches in Kettering churches. Our preachers are the key to helping this city, our community, and we need to put funding for the preachers out here, so they can help the community out here. And I appreciate all y'all doing. Y'all got a male nurse who's choking people right now, and Captain Perez and Chief of Police had lied to city commission meeting, I mean, the Civil Rights Commission right now, and the CEO don't care about nobody out here. They don't care about y'all family. If y'all go to that hospital right now, I'm warning y'all, because I'm concerned about y'all, don't go to Kettering Hospital, because that male nurse would choke y'all in the throat and slap y'all, and I don't want y'all to get killed, because I care about people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh.
We appreciate it.
And I will be in every city commission, or y'all's, in Trot Woods, and Dayton. I'm going to Dayton tomorrow, and tell that male nurse is out there, and the CEO need to be fired, get on welfare.
Thank you for your comments, sir. We'll now move to our city council reports. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to start? Oh, I'm sorry. That's my fault. You're right. We do have two other folk out there. You didn't move, but I'm... And you... Are you sure you don't want to talk? Okay, all right. Now we'll move on. No, it's good. They didn't move, but I was... Go ahead.
All right. On November 19, I had the opportunity to talk to some group of kids ranging in ages 14 to 18 in foster care. What's the name of the organization?
Agape.
Agape. I was going to say that wrong. It's on my paper here. But so they have a monthly meeting, and it has a different topic or a different presenter at each of these meetings, and this month, the topic was local government, which I thought these kids are going to think is really boring, and I was prepping for it, trying to make it a little entertaining when I went in. They were great, though. They had tons of questions, a lot of back and forth. You know, we deviated at times, but it was good. I talked about civic engagement, not just voting, you know, once a year or twice a year, but volunteering, you know, going to meetings like this, and just being active in your community. So it was great. It was... I was surprised how great an experience it was for me, and hopefully for them. I also just wanted to thank or wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully everyone has the opportunity to get together with family and friends and share some food and a good meal. And then, the day after Thanksgiving, for many people in Kettering, starts Christmas season, and I would just warn everyone to be careful when hanging lights. If you're feeling like Tim Taylor or Clark Griswold, I do that a little bit, and I think my neighbors worry about me, so be careful. We don't want to have to send out a first responder to come get you. So that's it for me.
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Sullivan, I impersonated Homer Simpson when I put my lights on. I'm glad to be back at council. I had missed the last few sessions due to some business demands and a bout with COVID, which was unfortunate. I was privileged to attend the National Cities Conference a couple of weeks ago. It was kind of eye-opening on a few things, so I was glad I had the opportunity to attend. I also was privileged to attend our luncheon last Thursday, where the city honor our volunteers. As everyone should be aware, we have an extremely robust volunteer group, and they do a great job. So again, thank them for their service. And as already been mentioned, Saturday is Small Business Saturday. We have a lot of small business in Kettering, and there are 28 shopping days until Christmas. Please avail yourself of our local merchants. Thank you.
I don't have much of an update. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and also, I've had this song stuck in my head all day. It's that one... No, 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 I'm not going to sing. It's that one about the state that we don't care about up north. You guys know that song? So just want to say, "Go Bucks and Happy Thanksgiving."
See, I didn't sing. Very good, Mr. Sudditt.
So last meeting, I was with Mr. Scott and Ms. Hall at the National League of Cities meeting, where I spent... of Cities meeting, where I spent five days explaining that I, I do in fact know Bruce Duke. I talked to Bruce Duke, and yes, Bruce Duke is missed. So, that just was every day. It started in the airport in Atlanta, actually. But Kettering has a longstanding presence with the Ohio Municipal League and the National League of Cities, and it was a real honor to be the voting delegate for our membership there for the business meeting at the end of the week, at, as the conference concluded, and be a part of that experience for a few days, two weeks ago. I'm also the representative for the Board of Community Relations. They've been busy. Just this month, we said official goodbyes to two longstanding members. Both, Tawanna Jones is rotating off at the end of December. Bill Sherhart, now that he will start with the city as an employee next month, rotated off, and we're in the process of welcoming two new members, both Andrea and Laura. Started Andrea this month, and we'll see Laura next month. All that to say, we still have openings to, to the Board of Community Relations. We're taking applications through the volunteer office if you're interested. They're busy working on plans for next year. We've already begun making changes to the Martin Luther King essay contest. We're now going to be in a Black History Month observance, working with the schools to finalize plans for that program, and have already started the plans for Juneteenth celebration and other events throughout the year. So, it, it's a committee that's very active, and they take their charge serious to make sure that the city of Kettering is welcoming to all populations that reside in our fair town. I think that's all my notes. Yeah, it's BCR, so we're ready to take a break for a couple of days of the holidays like everybody else. My shopping's done, because I'm a planner, and I will not be watching that football game you referenced. Why would you?
You live in Ohio, man.
Okay. That's all I have.
So, I'm going to round home with talking about gratitude. So, I am just so grateful for our volunteers. What a fantastic event that was. I'm also very grateful for our city employees. We, we had a wonderful awards ceremony, and I was shocked to find out we have two folks, Melissa Henson, as well as Gerald Wright, that celebrated 35 years with our city, and we had a lot of 30s, 25s. It's amazing how many great employees we do have, which, speaking of, I followed behind the leaf truck today, and so be kind to our, our gentlemen that are out there collecting the leaves, because that's a hard duty, and they were on Wilmington Pike going towards Mr. Scott's pile of leaves that were probably taller than my height, very many. Last, but certainly not least, I am grateful for our schools. There were two events this past week that were just over the top, where we're, we're teaching great humans. So, I had the opportunity to do mentoring with a young lady from Beavertown and to read to some 5th graders at Greenmont, and it was about being kind and talking about being kind and being inclusive and not exclusive. So, we are bringing up great citizens along, along the way we want to, to be great community stewards. And so, with that, happy Thanksgiving to all of our citizens that are watching this on TV, and be in no other further business to come before the council. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be December 3, and this meeting's adjourned.
Go Bucks.